There you go.
And we don't need a forum for this sort of part.
Yeah.
Computer audio. Oh, there's Maureen. Oh, she's just happy. Oh, look at her. Oh, good God, man.
Yeah, he's tuning in. I can hear him.
Oh gee, you're giddy.
We just can't see ya.
Yep.
There you are. You're live. We got you. I don't like the better than otherwise.
Not really. I like your swan face dance.
Yes. Uh, let me, let me text her and see where she's at. Well, she's still three minutes.
Oh, you're three minutes.
Yes.
A clock on the wall.
Okay.
Yeah.
They are.
I need to work on that.
Um.
That's it. Start the clock. That's the leaving.
Glad you have that figured out. Here's Amy.
All right, perfect. Your fly slides long. All right. Well, I don't have to call to order because it's a work session. But let us begin. And is Amy with us?
Yep.
Amy is here. Again, so while we haven't met during organization time, typically July is not a meeting that our administrators attend. But our new elementary principal, Ms. Amy Flora, is in attendance up top on your aisle living there. So again, just want to take a minute to introduce Amy. Because there's a good chance that as we kind of launch into, again, the pre, the pre-startup season for school, that she might be scarce next month. And then all of a sudden, September, and we're into school. So while we had a minute here, just want to take a minute to introduce Amy. And again, she's coming to us from the Coquille School District. And she's got seven plus years as an administrator in different positions out on the South Coast. And again, I don't want to oversell, but if you have questions for Amy while she's up there, go ahead and ask. You can turn your mute off if you want Amy in.
All right, good evening.
So Amy, so the kids, oops, did I lose everything? The kids said they saw you up at, at a track meet, is that right? Yeah.
We went up to watch Centro try to break the American record.
That was it. I couldn't remember.
Kyle, yeah.
Yeah. Glad you're here.
Yes.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be a part of the school district, so.
And I know that you'll understand the size of the shoes that you were filling.
I am very aware. Mike and I have already been working together. He's been awesome. And I'm pretty sure that we're going to get this off a very smooth start.
I would say the good thing about that is he's close by. And he's more than willing and able and capable of helping, I'm sure. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks. Good night.
Night.
Night, Amy.
Mr. Orr.
Yes.
Bob Orr, the Facilities Advisory Committee, sir.
Hello. Glad to see you all. I'm going to introduce a couple of members of our committee in just a moment. But let me just first say that we are very happy that the Facilities Advisory Committee is, in fact, alive and well. And we have just a short presentation here for you and a proposal for you to consider. So let's start with, let's see if this works. Oh, no, it does. That's great. Thank you, fine. All right, so the Facilities Advisory Committee was formed in about 2016. I don't know the exact dates, but it's been reorganized several times. And by that, I mean that we've had some change in membership. And we also have had different directives from the school board as we've moved along. It was inactive entirely from February 2020 to February 2021 because of COVID. But we restarted thanks to an authorization from the school board again. And our current membership is right here. And I don't know if you can see that very well or not. Hopefully, well enough to read it. We have two, besides myself, we have two other members who are here with us tonight. Bob Teeter, who is our newest member, and Suzie Lacer, who has also come over to join us. And I hope you guys will just jump in at any point, but I am going to go through this pretty quickly. This, by the way, I do want to say is an absolutely stellar group of people. I couldn't be happier with a committee to work with. It's fantastic. And it's just wonderful to see the progress that we're making. So let's go on over to a brief history of the bond measures over the last 20 years or so. Going back to May 1999, when the middle school bond was passed. And as you know, it closed out in 2019. I'm sorry, it passed in 1999, closed out 20 years later. And there were a couple of local option levies that did not pass and some did pass. And there were two that overlapped, so that now we're out until Jan. of 2024. I'm sure most of you know, probably all of you know pretty well, what happened in 2016 and 2018 with the bonds that were attempted, did not pass. The first one was in the range, I think, of 40 million, and that was a close vote. And the one that was for 108 million in 2018 was not so close. And that's where we stand today. So let's move on. So what we were authorized to do in February of this year by this, by this board was three things. To, first of all, consider the high school to be the highest priority. And although it was noted that that's probably going to be three to four years out at least, focus now on the elementary school with perhaps $10 to $13 million to look at north building size as we prepares, south end remodel, kindergarten classrooms moving into the complex, and improvements to the bus pickup area. And then to look also at high school improvements for safety and security. But bearing in mind that, that we may be replacing that building at some point. So we don't want to do so much or put so much into it, that then it doesn't make sense to replace it. So that was our charge. And since then, we have expanded our membership and are still doing that. The committee would like very much to have a student join us. And we've looked at a few students, but we're going to pick that up again in September. In the meantime, we've had nine meetings since January, or right in there, early February. We've toured four elementary schools. We have had conversations with a well-known school architect and futurist by the name of Prakash Nair. He visited one of our meetings remotely. And so we've learned a lot. And that leaves us with some recommendations. So let's see where I'm here. So we would like to recommend to the school board that you consider issuing a request for proposal for a Seisla School District master plan. And this would include recommendations, or the RFP would include facilities repairs, remodels, and replacements, present and future needs of the school district, and changes and innovations in education. And I say that because that's something that we haven't put in the years that we've been working on this committee. We haven't put a lot of time and thought into how education and facilities fit together. And we think that's really critical. So an RFP would involve exploration by an organization or architectural firm, if that's what it is, to explore community engagement, find out a little bit more about where the community stands right now. And there would be no cost to the issuance of the RFP, but a possible cost of the master plan, if we decide, if you decide to go that route, could be in the range of 80,000 to 90,000. But that's not something that we have a firm handle on and won't until we get proposals in based on what we would be asking for. So the reasons for this. First of all, education is changing. We have a building, high school, that's 50, more than 50 years old. And it has classrooms with rows of desks and a facility that is really not well-suited in many ways to today's educational thinking and environment. So that's one reason. Our community is growing, of course, and that makes a difference to the schools. Some facilities, as we know, are not sufficient or not in good condition. We felt that it was important, as we started looking at elementary schools, we felt it was important to look at the big picture, rather than just the elementary school or just the high school. We want to look at, put the package together. What do we need overall for the district for the next, well, I would say 50 to 75 years, if we can look that far out. A master plan would give us a long-term maintenance plan, consider community needs. We, as you may know, have a couple of TAP grants in progress right now. I believe, Andy, they are, do you remember which, what two they are?
Well, again, right now, we're in a, we have an energy rebate assessment grant. And we have another seismic studies grant.
Okay.
Bob, could you do me a favor? TAP is an acronym. Could you tell us what that is?
I can't, but I bet Andy can.
Technical assistance and planning. Okay, and is that from Ori Vermitz? Yes, it is. Okay.
Okay, good. I'm sorry, OBE. The review that we're having for assessment on that, is that going to be, is that another Bonneville one? Or who's doing our?
This one is, which carries here?
Sodestrom.
Sodestrom, yeah. It's a, it's an energy efficiencies. It's a comprehensive energy efficiency, see what we can make up at primarily elementary and middle school. On, it's related, it's similar to Bonneville, but it's a little more comprehensive because it starts also looking at water fixtures, not just lights, but other, other things that kind of expand on our electrical efficiencies. Because it's going to get into, you know, how much water we're using as well to drive down water heat costs and such, so.
Sodestrom and Emmer, Emmerestco?
Yeah. They're, they're competing firms in the same.
Okay. 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 This also, if at some point we do, you decide that you want to go out for a bond measure, this would give us some really solid rationale, which we could work with and point to. And finally, we believe that getting some creative thinking in here will help us to look at possibilities. But even though we have a great committee, there are things that we might not think of. So why not? Well, hopefully, economic health is returning. The school district needs are increasing, facilities are aging. And it's not going to slow down, it's going to speed up. More things break down, more maintenance is needed. We think the time to move forward is as soon as possible. The facility is, again, no longer serving the needs of the students as well as they should be. Enrollment is projected to increase. We had a dip during COVID, but it's going, it's going back up again. Construction costs are rising, and we hope that doesn't continue at the current rate. But it's certainly, there is an increase in costs. And employer needs are changing. And that's something that we hope can be taken into account with the master plan. So proposed timing, 2021, and I'll just let you take a look at this and see if you have questions. This is a, this is a sketch, an outline of how it could work. But it's not necessarily how it will work. This was our best estimate of what could happen here. I wish it could move along more quickly, but again, we decided as a committee that it was very important to take our time and be deliberate, deliberate, and, and move forward with a reasoned approach. So this, if the board decides, and we think that might be at a September meeting, possibly an August meeting if there is one, but I'm thinking maybe September. And if the board decides to issue an RFP, we are thinking that it might come out in October, with proposals returned in December. Then next year, January, we're looking at selection of proposal and a contract issued. We would estimate it takes several months to get this done. So we would be looking at May, June for the receipt of a master plan. Then July through December is a review of options, development of timeline. And if a bond is to be requested from this community, that would be decided on during that time period. And then depending on how things go, 2023, we could see a bond proposal to the voters in either May or November. So that's what we're thinking of. And I'd like to stop there. I'm a little bit over my time limit. And I do want to see if either Bob or Suzie would like to offer any thoughts.
I just, you know, being new into this process, and I've been through some other bond measures with other communities. What's intriguing to me about this and kind of going back to the meeting you had with Prakash, and I forget the name of his firm that he's with.
Oh, Education Design International.
Yeah, it's, it's looking at facilities, not only at how do we prepare our kids for the future, but what I liked about it too is it was innovative ways to keep kids engaged in school and using facilities to do that. And also be innovative enough that it sends a message to the community. You know, the question's always been, and community members, what's in it for me? We're talking to the school board. This addresses this. This, this really takes a hard look at how can we improve our economy? How can we benefit the community directly, immediately through this, through this process?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Bob. Let me, anybody have any questions, directors? Maureen, you're not officially director yet, but you can ask a question. Ms. Ferrer. Katie, save to you.
Okay.
Okay. Dennis? Any questions? Dennis?
I, I do not.
Yeah, she wasn't here when we first checked in. She's like, okay, John?
Asking, this question is for Bob's plural. Yeah, you mentioned. Bob, you mentioned earlier, I'm talking about economic impact in community. When you're, when you guys were in that meeting, what did that just roughly look like when they were talking about, you know, you're talking about economic stimulus community? Maybe it's something that's going to be beneficial to the, to the community? And how does it play out to the community? What were some of the ideas behind that?
I think what I saw was that, you know, it's really, before you get to a bond, it's doing that study of going directly to the employers. What are you seeing as need? What are you seeing as lacking? You know, what, you know, I, you know that everybody kind of go finding employment right now, finding people in full positions. But I also hear from employers that, you know, there's, there are certain skills that are lacking beyond just the, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, that, that they would like to see, you know, kids, you know, or young men and women have. And so it's, it's, it's getting, the whole idea is getting it out to the community ahead of time and saying, asking that question, what do you want it to be? What do you want, you know, when you ask that question, what's in it for me? Okay, what is it? What, what do you want? Instead of just throwing the bond out at them and saying, hey, we need this because our kids need it. It's a little more in depth, a little more thoughtful.
Little more along the lines of maybe like career technical education or something as fundamental as critical thinking skills?
I think both. And I think also there's, there's also talk about just innovation, you know, teaching kids to be entrepreneurs, bringing new business ideas, really getting, expanding the technology aspects of the world.
Thank you. We have, by the way, some studies from a previous iteration of this committee in terms of economic, the positive economic impact of facilities on a community, of the, of the construction of facilities, and how that impacts the whole economic structure of the community. So there's a lot of things, but we'll get into that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Give it to the horse, so.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work, but also thank you for the proposed timeline and listening to our questions.
All right, good.
All right. Our plan for the, for our August board retreat, we try to do this every year. And when we get into our meetings, we're, I was going to bring up at the end about whether or not we want, need to have a meeting in August at all. So we're thinking of, of setting up a time for us to have a work session to work on our board operating agreement, the one that we use. You know, keep that in mind that we're going to propose not to have a regular meeting. So, I mean, does anybody have any thoughts on a time? That's, I'm, I'm looking at your calendars. Would, would you prefer like a late afternoon, evening during the week? Like four to eight? Or maybe even three to seven? Or would a Saturday morning from nine to one work better? Katie?
I'm, I'm brand new, so let me be really annoying and say that the Monday would be great, that sixteenth day. But I could do Saturday. I mean, I'll do anything. But if I, if you have my preference, it'd be, would be those two. Might as well throw it out there.
Maureen, any?
That's good with me. I'm tired, so.
Okay. So we do it 3:00 AM?
Perfect for me.
John?
Monday would be fine.
Sixteenth?
Yes, the sixteenth.
Okay. Hey, Dennis?
Yeah, I'm with Maureen, 3:00 AM, it's fine.
Well, do you have preferences? Sounds like the preference here would be like a weekday.
Yeah.
And you want a suggestion, Monday to sixteenth, would that work okay for you?
Yeah, just let me know when.
Okay, all right. And I, I did ask Guy about this on the phone earlier today. And he said, whatever the board decides on, he can, he can do either one. Just as long as he doesn't get called to sort of cross, sort of summons and bookings at the last minute.
Yeah.
That was happening then.
That's what's happening right now.
Service clients.
Yeah. So, all right, Monday to sixteenth would be a, now, the more important thing is we were, we kicked around him and Danse Adams for Maureen's School Board Association. Do you know if he would be available, Mom?
Yes, he gave me, he said he would be.
That was on his data list.
Yeah.
You guys want to start at four, or three, or six, or one? It's hard for me to do it before two.
Two or four would be fine with me. I mean, those meetings tend to, can sometimes run longer than planned. And I know that it's not a schedule, but still it'd be.
And it's pretty, he's shown, last couple events we've had, he's shown he's very good at staying on task and.
Time management can be good, yeah. So, but I'm, I'm open to whatever on that aspect.
Yeah, same.
Okay.
Yeah. If we're treated after two, then yeah, for sure.
I'm going to propose, when we, when we get to the part on the agenda, that I'm going to propose three o'clock, so.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. All right. Did anybody get a chance to log on for an OSBA session? You didn't?
I did the two workshops, two of them.
Oh, well.
I loved them. I did the student one and the, what was it, Board Essential for Us Newbies. They were very excellent. I was just, I was writing very fast. I can't read my writing, but I, it was great.
I found it just a process of the writing.
It, it did help because I really continued afterwards. But no, they were very impressive.
Yeah.
Excellent, yeah. Students were very involved. It was just, it was really impressive.
John, you?
No, I didn't. But I will say, when we get, kind of get through what we're going through now, we can get back to having the, the board conventions, like especially the fall one in Portland, assuming that's where it'll be.
It'll be in Salem.
It'll be in Salem, okay. Those are fantastic. You know, especially for new board members, there's just really neat stuff. And it's hard to, you know, you can get a lot of it on Zoom, but when you can actually be there in person, the conference, absorb it all in, the vendors are there. It's just the whole atmosphere is just so much more conducive to learning, and you take away so much more from it. So, yeah, definitely when that, when that comes up. And, and the summer conferences were good too. Those were usually in ER or in Bend. And those, those were fun too. But the fall ones are spectacular.
Yeah, they're very, very beneficial, OSBA uses also. Dennis came. Did you get in any of the sessions?
Did not.
Okay, neither did I. All right, well, we will call the order in about eight and a half minutes, according to what I'm seeing up there. So feel free to mill about your own. Katie, nurse.
This is the first time I did.
Go for it back.
This is the first time I've been able to bang in the apples. All right, it is 6:30 and it is time to call the July 28th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Directors. I saw School District 97J to order. And I would just like to mention and remind everyone that our mission is motivating and preparing all students to reach their greatest potential. And we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have a recorded one, is that correct?
Yes, we do.
And.
So we all get to rise?
Yes.
Oh, nice hat.
All right, thank you. Uh, yeah. Mr. Harkle Road pointed out, she volunteered for that. I think it was virtual.
It did.
Guy, did you click that box?
No.
Let's do, do we want to do it again?
We apologize. We did have audio and I'm sure there are people who wanted to see this. So could we replay the Pledge of Allegiance again?
We're still getting all the technical stuff, didn't we?
I need.
Because I, I know a great grandparent.
Hello, esteemed board members and members of the Florence community. I'm elementary school principal Mike Harkle Road and I'm here today with Adrena Sneddon. Adrena's dad is Eric, who does a lot of work around town in our district. Adrena was one of the very first kids to sign up and to say, I want to do the Pledge of Allegiance for the school board. So she knows this is going to be shared with you over the summer months. She's very much looking forward to it. She has well practiced and she's going to show us exactly how this works and how to say the Pledge of Allegiance. And later I'll show you how she spelled the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, you ready? Mask off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, Adrena. Thank you very much. Look right back in the camera.
All right.
And say bye.
Thank you. And moving on, uh, oh, the first business item, 2.4 is the oath of office. And we have two new members who were newly elected and one incumbent who was reelected. So we shall begin with, uh, John Barnett will, will do the experience deck first. You can just stay in your spot there.
Okay.
If you like.
Ah, fine with me.
All right. Got to go over here because it's going to come to me because I'm talking. All right. So raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Say your name.
John Barnett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
For.
For.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the SISA school district.
And the policies of the SISA school district.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office. Oh, there it is.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome aboard and that's for you. Did everybody get an election signed by my French shirt or that shirt? All right, Maureen, since you're on this side of the table. See, that's why I did it with him, but learned when to break it up. Not her head. I.
I, Maureen Miltenberger.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the SISA school district.
And the policy of the SISA school district.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right. All right. This is, I just want to point out, this is the third generation of my family who served on the school board and the fourth member of my immediate family So, all right. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Katie Sneddon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
The Constitution and the laws of the state of Oregon.
And the policies of the SISA school district.
And the policies of the SISA school district.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the responsibilities of the office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of the office as a school board member to the best of my ability. Probably I can read it on the, on the screen. I cheated.
All right. Welcome aboard. Happy.
There we go.
I told you in May, I'm very happy you have both of you.
Yeah.
All right, step out of order. We will call the roll. So, uh, Bonnie, would you call the roll? And Director King, don't forget to unmute your, your microphone.
Okay. I will start with Bob Sneddon.
Here.
Maureen Miltenberger.
Here.
Katie Sneddon.
Here.
John Barnett.
Here.
Diana Hemlott is absent. And Dennis King.
Here.
Guy Rosenbaum is absent. Andrew Despotz, Superintendent, is here. And Carrie Boylan is absent tonight. Okay.
All right, thank you very much. And moving on to item 2.7 is the approval of the agenda for tonight. And Mr. Woskowak?
Okay. Item 072821-217. Approval of the agenda. Superintendent, Board Chair, Vice Chair, me to prepare the agenda one week prior to board meeting. Items of business may be suggested by any board member, staff member, student or citizen of the district by notifying the superintendent at least five workdays prior to the meeting. Any changes to the agenda must be approved by a majority vote. One note to the background, due to the election, we do not have a vice chair president. President, I asked words Paul because it's the first time in 16 years he hasn't been around. So recommendation, administration recommends approval of the agenda as presented.
All right, Director, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors approve the agenda as presented. Resolution 072821-2.7, approve agenda.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Director Barnett.
Close enough.
Second Advisor, Maureen Miltenberger, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, I will call for the vote. Directors, please unmute your microphones. And all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. So now we are in the public comment and.
Excuse me, I'll go to 2A.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Chair.
I'm sorry, I was focused on that big black bow. 2.8 is electing the Chair and Vice Chair. So at this time, I'll open nominations for the position of Chair.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I nominate Bob Sneddon.
Okay.
For Chair.
Duly noted, thank you. Any other nominations for Chair?
I did speak with Guy Rosenbaum earlier and he did authorize me to make this recommendation.
All right. So, uh, hearing no further nominations, uh, the Chair closes nominations and would ask for all those in favor of being Chair, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And I will now, uh, offer the nominations for Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, I, I nominate Dennis King. And, uh, same thing as earlier, Guy Rosenbaum referred to as recommending Dennis King as well.
Okay. Any other nominees for, uh, Vice Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Guy Rosenbaum.
Okay. All right. Are you, I, I duly noted, the two nominations. Now, I just want to clarify, are you, by doing that, are you signaling that you're, you don't wish to be Vice Chair?
So, are you speaking to me?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Okay. Well, uh, currently I'm on the Policy Committee and I'm also on the Facilities Committee and, and those don't take lots of time, but it's, it's additional time. So I guess I'd, unless, unless I'm, I'm switching, which is, I mean, look at, look at the Katie and, and Maureen there and see if they want to do policy and, and/or facilities and I, I'll switch.
Okay. Because unless you withdraw your nomination, people could vote on you, vote for you, so.
Okay. So without, you know, any input from them, I'll withdraw then because I wouldn't want the third thing on there. Thank you.
All right. All right. So we have a nomination for Guy Rosenbaum. Director King was nominated but has withdrawn. Are any other nominations for Vice Chair? Okay. Hearing none, I will go ahead and ask for a vote. All those in favor of Guy Rosenbaum as Vice Chair. And he does have the option of declining it when we next see him. So if he does decline it, we would be in this position and the next time I'd be. So all those in favor of Guy Rosenbaum as Vice Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, those opposed? Motion carries and so the slate of officers, myself as Chair and Guy Rosenbaum as Vice Chair. Thank you very much. Uh, now we go to public comment and we have one prior request. And did everybody get a copy of this? Okay.
Yeah.
From Mr. Michael Allen. And, uh, Mr. Allen, you're welcome to, to paraphrase, paraphrase your letter or give us additional information or details. You don't have to read it word for word to get it in direct because it is in the record the way you presented it here. So, Mr. Allen, thank you very much first for your interest and for being here this, this evening.
Well, well, good evening, SISA school board members, superintendent, principals, teachers, students and the public. I'm Michael Allen and I am a member of the Florence Climate Emergency Campaign as well as the Elder's Climate Action Oregon Chapter, which I'm a leader of. And, and my subject tonight is the climate education and green occupational training. And I will read this into the record, the written for the public. First, I would like to congratulate Maureen Miltenberger and Katie Sneddon upon their, First, I would like to congratulate Maureen Miltenberger and Katie Sneddon upon their, I said election, but swearing in tonight, to the school board, and welcome them to new and exciting opportunities to make a difference. Just as the COVID pandemic took hold last year, I approached the school board in a virtual meeting somewhat like this, one to ask that you implement a sustainability curriculum offered by Len Greenwood. A former school teacher from California who lives in Southern Oregon and has plans to move to Florence area. His curriculum leads students to green technology training and internships, which could be linked to Lane Community College. With the help of former board member Suzanne Van Heitz, Superintendent G authorized the first class in sustainability for high school freshmen. A science teacher volunteered to teach the class, and Len Greenwood was primed to offer consultation. Unfortunately, two things happened that prevented these plans from moving forward. First, COVID restrictions and new requirements for teaching put a lot of things on hold, including creating and introducing new curriculum. Second, and most unfortunately, the science teacher who agreed to teach the first sustainability class left the district. No one else came forward as a replacement. I now come before you at a time when we are in a climate emergency to ask that you support the Superintendent, principals, and teachers in implementing Mr. Greenwood's sustainability curriculum. Our students must be educated about climate, and in some cases be trained for jobs that help save our planet. They are our future. To show how much our young are thinking and reacting to our climate crisis, I offer you this beautiful display of images and messages about how we should lead our lives. It was created by Aisha, a 10-year-old girl visiting Florence with her grandmother, who happened to be passing by our 96th climate strike at front of City Hall. According to her grandmother, she was so taken by our messages about climate, she went home and made this collage. Aisha's story is an outstanding example of how education and an understanding between generations can make a difference. There are many opportunities underway that can further the involvement of students with their schools, family, and community with respect to dealing with the climate crisis. I would be most happy to meet with anyone in the district to explore these opportunities, particularly with our new high school principal. As a substitute teacher in the SISA schools and an elder in the community, I have a special affinity for seeing young people like Aisha get excited about being educated, so they can be the ones to lead us forward. Thank you so much, and have a good meeting tonight.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your comments and taking time to present them to us. All right. It's customary that we don't take action on comments that, that is something we want to take up on a later day to actually go on and. All right, moving on now. Oh, I know what happened, I got, I got different pages open here. Do you want me to move to the consent agenda? I thought we had already approved the consent.
No, no, we approved regular agenda.
Be a check. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, consent agenda, I'm sorry, it's, yeah, so 5.0, Mr. Griscoak talked about the consent agenda.
Okay, consent agenda, consent business, item 072821-5.0. This month's consent agenda contains the following items, our May 12th, 2021 board minutes as an attachment, the May financial statement as an attachment, most recent enrollment figures. Administrator contracts for the upcoming 21 and 22 school year, and updates for the professional growth and evaluation handbook. Administration recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, or it's reminded that any consent agenda items which may require additional discussion may be added to the agenda as a regular item.
Directors, your pleasure, this.
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as presented, resolution 072821-5.0, consent agenda.
Motion's been made to approve the consent agenda as submitted, any second on that?
I'll second.
Motion made by Director Barnett, seconded by Director Katie Sneddon, and.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Mine says the June 16th in June, it says May.
Oh, 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 it might be, I didn't change the, maybe I changed the header in the background.
Where, where is that? Oh, okay.
In the, in the resolution sheet. Yeah, sorry, I read the resolution sheet in the agenda, it's the June 16th, the June 2021 financial statement. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, I changed it off the most recent agenda, but I forgot to go through the packet.
Packet, oh, okay, I read the.
So that change is noted.
Yeah, okay. So 5.2 actually says.
June, yeah, so yeah, 5.1 is the June 16th board minutes, and 5.2 is the June 2021 financial statement.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for catching that.
Did you, did you read it? Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those, please signal their approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. 6.0, action discussion, no first readings of policies, but we do have second readings, 6.2, Mr. Griscoak.
Okay, this is a carryover from prior meeting. Board Member Standards of Conduct is a policy clarification piece regarding public statements. So again, resolution 072821-6.1.1, reverting policy VBF. To avoid any potential confusion that a personal political statement or endorsement may be an official position of the school board district. It is suggested that directors make any clarification of the nature of their statement at a time of political statement or endorsement. While Oregon law requires a clarification after such a statement is made and requested, a declaration at the time of a statement. Was made most personal, would avoid any confusion amongst members of the public. This modification policy does not limit free speech of any school board director. It requests that a clarification of a personal nature just be included in the beforehand relevant matter. So administration recommends the board consider adoption of the policy VBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct as presented.
All right, we've had first reading in the June meeting, directors, motion will be in order fairly.
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors approve changes to the policy VBF as presented, resolution number 072821-6.2.1, VBF, Board Member Standards of Conduct.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Director Barnett made the motion, and Director Miltenberger seconded, and. Just to clarify, stating upfront as mentioned here instead of afterwards or a question is not a guarantee. So, no confusion. All right, any comments, any discussion on the motion?
Um, the only thing that I went down here is for the new board members, so definitely take a look at section 23 on that, I'm not going to read from that. Up to date on what the new board, new board member's orientation is, but about us being mandatory reporters, so that's definitely something we all have to take.
Okay, that's a separate issue, that's a good one to bring up in the directing comments, yeah.
The, the single line that's been added as item 22, state that political endorsements or opinions expressed in media are personal and not an official position of the board of district. That is a piece that's clarified in the Secretary of State's handbook, because again, you are all free to use your elected title in any media at any point in time, making any political statement or endorsement. But then if a member of the public were to ask for clarification of that's personal or a district, you then have to clarify. But it was, the idea came up that if people said, hey, this is a personal statement, it would, it would. Stop the need to have that to be done afterwards, and so it's a minor amendment.
Okay.
Which is, that's how it was crafted, that's all.
All right, with no further discussion on the motion, I will ask for all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? And Director King, are you muted, or were you abstaining?
I said aye.
Oh, you must have been muted, I didn't hear it, but thank you. All right, motion carries, moving on to 6.2.2, and which is a very similar policy language, only applies to the staff. And Mr. Griscoak?
Yes, okay, again, item 072821-6.2.2. We have the same addition, again, to avoid potential confusion, that a personal political statement or endorsement may be the official position of the district. It's suggesting that district employees make any clarification of their, of the nature of their statement at the time of a political statement or endorsement. Modification does not limit free speech of any employee of the school district, the only request that that clarification of personal nature of the statement be included beforehand rather than afterwards. Administration recommends the board consider adoption of BG, staff participation in political activities as presented.
All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors approve the changes to the policy GBG as presented, resolution number 072821-6.2.2, GBG, staff participation in political activities.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by, seeing almost fired, Director Barnett, a man of motion, this is a supplier. Seconded by Director Katie Sneddon, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, I heard that one. Those opposed? Hearing, I heard everybody saying aye, so motion carries. And thank you very much, now moving on to organizational requirements, this is something we do every year, this is called dogging the eyes, Mr. Griscoak.
Item 072821-6.3, annual organizational requirements. The board is required to adopt organizational requirements each year at its first meeting of the fiscal year. These requirements authorize and designate organizations to facilitate district business. Administration recommends you adopt the organizational requirements for the fiscal year 2021, 2022 as presented.
Okay, directors? I almost think some of these could have, could have. Yes, sir.
Yeah. So be it resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors adopts the organization requirements as presented for the 2021-2022 fiscal year, resolution number 072821-6.3, district organization.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Director King made the motion to approve the organizational requirements, and Director Miltenberger seconded, any discussion?
If you have any question, your edits are listed in prior years.
All right. Hearing no questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, moving on to the student calendar, Mr. Griscoak.
Okay, item 072821-6.3, 2021 student calendar adjustment to instructional days. Again, the board adopted the primary instructional calendar for March 2021 meeting. We had anticipated instructional hours at those, but the building meeting times have changed. This goes along with your organizational requirements of the year. Again, the revised calendar has no notes as to potential hold dates or influence weather. Because again, with the increased instructional time, we've added roughly seven instructional days on average over the course of the previous calendar time. Administration recommends the board adopt the revised 2021, 2022 calendar as presented.
Okay. The Chair will reserve this one for himself, the Chair moves to approve. Resolution 072821-6.3 in the matter of approving the 2021, 22 student calendar adjustment to instructional days. Is there a second?
Just a.
I'll second it.
Okay, Chair made the motion to approve this, and Director Miltenberger seconded, and questions, comments, or discussion on the motion?
Shouldn't that be 6.4, not 6.3?
I was, yeah, it should be, it's 6.4 on your agenda, it's 6.3 on the resolution document, but it should be 6.4, you're right. So. The Chair hereby amends the motion to refer to being at 6.4, is there a second to the amendment?
I will second.
Okay, so we have a motion for an amended motion. Changing the resolution number, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carries, so we have the amended motion with the correct resolution. Any discussion on that? Thank you, Director Barnett, you catch me then. All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion as it is amended, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries. There are no opposition, and we move on to next item, are you sure it's 6.5?
It is 6.5. I'm looking them over. Just depends on what you paint. Okay. Item 072821-6.5, Oregon School Employees Association, SISA Chapter 57. Collective bargaining agreement, three-year contract, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. The current collective bargaining agreement with the Oregon School Employees Association, SISA Chapter 57, and the SISA School District. July 20, July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021 has expired. The spring and new collective bargaining agreement was negotiated between the district and the membership of the Classified Employees Association. And we've negotiated a standard three-year bargaining agreement, tentative agreement coming out of negotiations, doesn't have been ratified by the membership of the Oregon School Boards, Oregon School Employees Association. By a majority vote, prior to coming to the board of directors. Administration recommends the SISA School District Board of Directors ratify the new collective bargaining agreement with the OSEA SISA Chapter 57 for the next three-year term, commence in July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
All right, directors, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors adopt the collective bargaining agreement as ratified by the members of the Oregon School Employees Association, SISA Chapter 57. For the next three-year term of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Resolution number 072821-6.5, classified collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
All right, motion made by Director Barnett, seconded by Director King to approve this resolution, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, hearing none, motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, and moving on to certified employees.
Okay, SISA Education Association, Certified Employee Union Collective Bargaining Agreement, three-year contract, July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. Item 072821-6.6, pre, the previous collective bargaining agreement, June district and certified union expired June of 2020, and there was a one-year temporary extension to bridge this last school year. This bringing the collective bargaining agreement was negotiated between the district and the professional educators of the SISA Education Association. This collective bargaining agreement is a standard three-year agreement, tentative agreement coming out of negotiation sessions has been ratified by the membership of the SISA Education Association by a majority vote, prior to coming to the board of directors. Administration recommends the SISA District Board of Directors ratify the new collective bargaining agreement with the SISA Education Association for the next three-year term of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
All right, and motion will be in order?
Mr. Chair, be resolved that the SISA School District Board of Directors adopt the collective bargaining agreement as ratified by the members of the SISA Education Association for the next three-year term of July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024. Resolution number 072821-6.5. Resolution number 072821-6.6 Certified Collective Bargaining Agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Director Barnett, seconded by Director King to approve this resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, none. Motion carries, you announce, thank you very much. And just a note to the folks watching online, and our two new directors here, it's not always this exciting. Reports and information, Mr. Griscoe, do you have any communications?
Yes, I do have a few. We do have some new employees to report. So first, new hires, certified administrative. Ms. Christine Newlin, second grade teacher, Cyusla Elementary School. She'll be her first year as a teacher coming in. Previously, Ms. Newlin is actually an aide with the district. Savannah Miller, first grade teacher, Cyusla Elementary School. Amy Flora, who you met earlier, principal, Cyusla Elementary School. Sarah Mann, her technical education, health, oncology, patients and science, Cyusla High School. Dylan Perry, physical education and health, Cyusla High School. Tricia Holden, math and alternative ed, Cyusla High School. Transfers within the district or classification. Christina Ori, teacher on special assignment for Talented and Gifted with the Cyusla School District. Jamison Kobilak, sixth grade math teacher at the middle school. And Mr. Mark Hyperrode, moving to the principal at the high school. Some new hires and transfers. Elizabeth Wheeler, library 8-2 for Cyusla Middle School. And Michelle Saret, special education aide, Cyusla Middle School. Retirements and resignations. Ms. Ward Large, retirement custodian, Cyusla Elementary School. Ms. Large has been with the school district now 35 years. Oh, yeah, it's, yeah. Jennifer White, custodian, elementary, Cyusla, at the elementary. Ashley Cole, head volleyball coach. And let's see, a couple of quick notes, again, just kind of keeping up on health metrics as we've been posting through the summer. Again, we see a little blip with some stuff following the 4th of July. But the majority of the school district in terms of overall, we see a 70% vaccination rate. This is all age groups. And then the safety guidelines that have submitted through Land County Public Health, which are posted here, have been approved by county health. But of course, we're being pulled back in on Monday with the recent spate of random announcements that have been made over the last 36 hours. We'll see what kind of happens there, but again, if, you know, again, we keep basic distance and some health protocols. We should, we'll be operating on campus five days a week on our regular hours that we've approved. Yep, and so that's where we're headed. But again, looking at our total number of students that really needed a true online option, rather than staffing up for that. And again, a lot of districts have done that, but then to make it viable, they've had to kind of recruit other students from other districts. The Metro East Web Academy, Breschler Barlow, again, for the, again, looking at probably the 10 to 15 elementary students that might need that option. We have, again, 10 probably middle school and maybe 10 high school that would need an asynchronous total virtual option. We could designate, you know, Mewla, the Metro East Web Academy, as our primary virtual option first before they go off to a full profit charter school. And so they have a real solid academic track record than that. So it's a better option than us trying to staff it with our, and impact our overall in-class ratio of staff.
That, that sounds like a win all the way.
It is, and we don't, and again, and because otherwise, we, if our, because our members would fluctuate wildly and then we have staff kind of sitting fallow waiting for kids. And it's a, it's a ratio we don't want to have to mess with to impact our in-class operations. Yeah, and then again, we've got a couple of summer workshops events coming up that are listed there. So other than that, we're, we're targeting everybody on campus September 8th.
Thank you very much. And Perry Blake is not here and she gave us her report, well, it was in the consent agenda.
Right, yeah.
Did she, is there anything else that she wanted, needed to have a part to us?
No, again, the financial report that you had in the consent agenda is pretty comprehensive. We'll have our primary, we'll start, I don't think, so last week of September, we'll get in pre-audit. Yeah, we're nowhere in, right on track of what we should be for the year.
Okay, no administrator reports, no administrators because it's July. And so we'll move on, future meeting dates. What do you guys think about not having a meeting? I mean, if we don't have a, a formal business meeting in August, how does that impact staff?
It, there would be no real impact across the board then, because we can, any staff approvals that you need could be done in September. We don't have any. Let's see, again, if we needed an emergency meeting for like a budget reconciliation or something along those lines, we could. We'd have that if we needed to kind of combine that with the work session on the 16th for a quick.
That's kind of what I was saying.
Two nights, that would be it.
Well, that's, that was, I was just going to segue into that one, so are we comfortable with a, a work session for our board operating agreement? Monday to 16th, from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. pending leave?
And that's fine, I think we can address, you know, obviously that's posted to the public, so we can address any issues we need to have.
One other thing to mention from a staff standpoint is if we have a regular meeting late August, there's a lot going on for them.
Because that, that week of the 16th will be the start of registration week. Then the next, and the week after that is in-service week. We get into, we're really kind of getting a crunch time, so.
I'm, I'm all about taking that off for a day.
All right, no, that'd be good for that.
When is the next facilities committee?
Oh, yes.
I can tell you because I already put it on my.
Okay, good.
I put it on my magic calendar.
18.
When?
18.
Oh, August 18th?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, we're set for the 6, 6 o'clock on the 18th.
Okay, thank you, Director King, appreciate that. And I would like to mention when Bob Orr was talking about committee members in the room, he neglected the one that was online with Dennis King and, and me. Although since February of April, I have not made any facility committee members, but I'm going to try to make it on the 18th. We had a presentation last week with, with the two new directors and it was a very good, it was a good session. And I would like to applaud Bonnie for putting together very good faculty information, very thorough. Takes a lot of work to do stuff like that, and I just want to acknowledge that and thank you for it. So directors, have any, any acknowledgements? And just for the, for the guys, this is a time, if you have something positive that you've seen or thought about within the district, it's a good time to bring it up. Director Barnett, you have anything?
Yeah, pretty slow, so, summer months, and not that I can think of off the top of my head, so.
Okay, and I had something else that's popped in my mind, but Dennis King, anything for you, sir?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, Kate? All right. One thing that's popped in my mind was the land use hearing. Is that?
So, yeah, we, again, the district owns the old Kate Creek School property. There's been, there is a group that owns the property that they're trying to develop and reading through the Land County Use Management, Land Use Management. That property's been tied up in litigation for 12-plus years. And there's another land use hearing that's coming up on August 12th. I, with, haven't been tied up for that long, I don't know if it's going forward, but that is, what's being, if you had a chance to look at the, the map. Or it's, it's inland from that, and I know we've talked about maybe using that, that plot as a land lab or developing it some other way. But I, I don't know. I'm not a land use planner, but I don't, I don't know where that, where that's going to go.
And the district was notified of the hearing because we're.
We're near my property, and that's really it.
And the district's been notified of other hearings too, and this has been a long ongoing process, yeah. And to be honest with you, the properties are going to be developed, if they're ever going to be developed, and with recent changes to, to F1 and especially F2 zoning in regards to legal lot verification. That's happened as a, as a ruling that happened last April. The probability of this subdivision going anywhere is, is unlikely. So of the subdivision, it's 95 acre lots just because of the underlying zoning issues, so. And as far east of our property anyway, I don't know what the impact action would be. And if it does get approved, it probably will be a lot of years down the road. That's, you know, that's probably unlikely, so.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Parker Road has one piece that went with the pledge allegiance. He'd like to hear it really quick if he can, upon the screen.
Is he still with us?
I think he is.
Wow, I don't like.
All right, here. When we put out the, the request for students who wanted to participate in the pre-recorded pledge, this was what I got folded up and handed, handed to me at lunch from Adrina. Which I have to say is some of the best guess spelling, which is a strategy we encourage at the elementary school, when you don't know a word, give it your best shot. I think she made it, nailed it because it is completely readable.
I heard a former teacher comment on the handwriting was readable.
Handwriting is excellent. And.
Very impressive.
Pledge allegiance, we had the discussion that it's actually several words and she.
I bet it's spot on.
Turned a little red, she was embarrassed, she, she honestly thought it was just one word and.
You did a great job.
Yes.
You did a great job, and thank you for spearheading that, and I'm sure your successor will continue that tradition for us. All right.
I volunteer her.
Nothing else before this body, I would accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion and seconded to adjourn, and in reading all of my parliamentary procedures, I have been in error for the past year, so. Motion's been made to adjourn and seconded, and no discussion, is, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? None, and so we adjourn. Thanks a big man.